So the purpose of the Parks Recreation Open Space Plan, it does a lot of things. The first and one of the first things we did in the process was updating all of the citywide assets. And that's pretty extensive. That's parks, recreation facilities, open space areas, natural spaces, trails, programs, maintenance responsibilities. All of those things go into this plan because ultimately this is something that the city needs to take a hard look and close look at. What do we own? What do we need to take care of? And how do we make sure we sustain those improvements into the future? This is a community-driven plan. We're going to talk a lot about how that unfolded with this process, how we involve the community, what we heard. The community needs and the priorities we're going to talk about tonight are what is the gist of this plan? That's how we help the city find out what's coming up next and how do we prioritize those ideas? And together that forms the vision. What do we want to achieve in the long term? What does McMinnville want to be known for in terms of its park and recreation system? So if we go back about two years ago now, which is hard to believe, we had a similar discussion. But at that point, we were just getting started and we went around the dais and asked each of you, what would you like to get out of this process? What's important to you for Parks and Recreation in the future of McMinnville? And so this is just a kind of a short list of some of the bigger ideas that council mentioned. Reimagining older parks, definitely something that we took a close look at with this process. There are some amazing new parks in McMinnville, but there are also some older parks that need some investment. You know, they've been kind of sitting there and they need a little bit of attention. Connectivity is something that the council talked about as a priority. You know, connecting between neighborhoods, safe connections, park connectivity, and then just connections in and of themselves. So, you know, trail use and activities are extremely popular. Conservation and sustainability, we talked a lot about that, and this is something that we hope that you find in the draft plan. And then someone mentioned Parks for All Ages and the eight to eighty timeframe came up, and that's absolutely something that we took a close look at throughout the planning process. You know, Parks and Recreation isn't for any one particular age group. It's for as many ages as possible, you know, from really little kids to teens and tweens and young adults all the way up to older adults. And then lastly, embracing different cultures, and this is something that hopefully resonates throughout the plan document, looking at the many different communities and neighborhoods in McMinnville that make up such a great city. So to do that, we looked at a couple of different lenses in terms of identifying community needs and priorities. We met with the DEI Committee, as we mentioned, that served as the advisory committee throughout the planning process. We just met with them late last month, as Susan mentioned. So we started early on understanding that this is really a lens that we should be looking at to plan Parks and Recreation in McMinnville. So what we did is looked at the way that NRPA, the National Recreation and Parks Association defines equity, and that's shown here. And I think a few highlighted words are important here. Just and fair, quantity proximity and connections to quality parks and green spaces. Also rec facilities, programs that are safe, inclusive, culturally relevant and welcoming to everyone. So right off the bat, you can really see what we thought about is equity in terms of park quantity, proximity and connections. And we'll show you a little bit more about how that translates into the plan itself. So the planning process, this is just a kind of a high-level graphic of what was involved and how those inputs formed the draft plan we're talking about tonight. So back in the fall of 2022, we took a close look at parks, recreation facilities, programs, maintenance needs and so on, to really get an understanding of what are the conditions today? And in a lot of ways, what are some ways that we can add capacity or improvements to existing parks and facilities? We then launched into the assessment of park system needs and the vision for that future. And you can see through each step, every step of the way, we involved the public at large, the DEI Committee, of course, council, Planning Commission, the staff team was along in every step of the way, as well as others throughout the process. So this, again, is a community-driven plan to define what the future looks like. So more recently, we developed that strategy along with staff and we had that last meeting in September with the council and Planning Commission to start understanding priorities. Ellie's going to talk more about that in just a minute. And then here we are tonight. We've got the draft plan. We'll have a couple of slides at the end talking more about how we're taking feedback from the community as well on making any refinements and changes to this draft. Great. So we're going to move on to the next step. And Ellie's going to talk a little bit about how we put the plan together and more importantly, what are the key chapters of the plan? So Ellie, take it away.
Great. Thanks, John. Good evening, Council. Ellie Schaefer with MIG. Happy to share more about this planning process with you tonight. So the draft plan, hopefully you've had a chance to take a look at it. It's a big document. We recognize that. There's a lot packed in there. You know, we really wanted to document the existing system and the goals for the next 20 years. So I'll give you just a little overview so you can know where to find things a little bit easier in there. The beginning is really about the purpose of the plan, the process that John was just speaking to. That's chapter one. Chapter two is the system snapshot. So that's really where we look at the existing conditions, both of the community as a whole, the population, and what are the components of the park system today? Chapter three then gets into the vision, goals and objectives. So that's where the plan provides that 20-year vision, and it really is a guide for the future. So that includes different policies and programs that the city can use to guide decision-making related to Parks and Recreation for the next several years. Chapter four is where we get into more specific opportunities. So we summarize kind of everything we heard related to needs for the Parks and Rec system. So that comes from both community engagement as well as more technical analysis and mapping and looking at different metrics, as you'll see in chapter four. So that's where we kind of pull all the different inputs together. And then ultimately, chapter five is the action plan. So that's where you'll find all the different projects listed out, how to fund those and different implementation considerations, as well as some prompts regarding prioritization. So in chapter five, I'll point out there is the five-year action plan. That's a subset of the larger 20-year CIP in the appendix of the plan. And that's what we have tentatively identified as the most pressing priorities for the park system for the next five years. So I'll talk a little bit more about how we got there in a couple of slides. The appendices, that's where we have the detailed inventory of all the assets within the park system today, the need survey summary, our first big community survey, that 20-year CIP I just mentioned, as well as the results of our second community survey, which was regarding priorities.
Ellie, sorry to interrupt. I did want to let you know that I put a copy of the five-year action plan at everybody's place and also the system map, just for ease of having to not flip back and forth in the document. So they have copies of that.
Great. Thank you, Susan. We also have the PDF handy if we need to jump to any specific pages while we're together tonight. So a quick recap of our engagement throughout this process. I mentioned we did two surveys. We were really thrilled with the result. We reached over thirty-seven hundred different residents. We also did a series of in-depth interviews and focus groups to get feedback from specific groups that, you know, we wanted to make sure were heard, such as Spanish speakers, the school district, the county, different stakeholders that have a special interest in Parks and Recreation. We also did a few different pop-up events around the city. And we've met with you all, Planning Commission and the DEIAC and the school district eleven different times so far throughout this process. Susan will speak to this or John a little bit more later, but we do plan to do one more public open house regarding the draft plan as well. So one more in-person chance for folks to weigh in. We also have an online comment forum that's available right now, as well as our website, which has been up in running this whole time where people can submit their ideas and comments at any point throughout the process. So through all that engagement, we formed a vision and goals. So the vision, I'll just touch on some of the highlights here. This is really defining the Parks and Rec system into the future for McMinnville. So it talks about being inclusive and interconnected, safe and welcoming for everybody, serving as lifelong learning opportunities and fun, supporting healthy lifestyles, natural habitats and ecosystems, serving as a place for community cohesion and really bringing neighbors together. And then the role of Parks and Rec in supporting the economy as well as the local unique heritage and culture. Again, equity has been a really important lens for us on this project. So the vision ends talking about equity and just making sure that we're stewarding the Parks and Rec system and thinking 20 years out in the future, who are the future generations that are going to be using this? And how can we provide them with the system that will really support their needs? So more specifically, we have seven goals that we developed that we are trying to achieve in several different ways throughout the plan's objectives and action plan. Goal one is to ensure equitable park access. Goal two, support community cohesion. Goal three, provide a welcoming system. Four, provide safe and clean parks. Five, support diverse recreation opportunities. Six, celebrate and preserve nature. And seven, increase off-street trail connections, excuse me. So hopefully you'll see that as you review the plan, the contents, and then the engagement results, that, you know, these are really kind of the most important pieces for the Parks and Rec system that we've identified. And then lastly, the objectives. So these are really the more specific, you know, actions that are in the plan. Here, we've just pulled a couple of them. They're organized into some different categories in there, but these ones are just a sampling that are more related to equity. So, for example, looking at distributing parks and recreation facilities equitably across the city, making sure that parks are accessible for all in their future improvements and design. So once you actually get to the park, that they're accessible. Looking at community events to increase community cohesion and inclusion, equitable and inclusive naming practices, and then promoting DEI in the Parks and Rec system in general in several different ways. So that's sort of an overview of all those pieces. Anything more broad overarching about the park system that's included as, you know, a policy is going to be in chapter three of the plan. So then to get a little bit more specific, you know, we've identified through our analysis and all this outreach, you know, all these components of the Parks and Rec system that could be improved and the city can work on over time. But it's really important to prioritize that so we don't end this project and this plan with a big wish list that's unattainable. So prioritization was a key step in this for us, and we hit it from a few different angles, as you may remember from our last meeting with you all. So we just wanted to summarize a bit about what we heard from the DEIAC. Reminder about what we heard from you and Planning Commission in that last joint session, as well as what we heard from the community regarding priorities from that online survey. So a few highlights, starting with DEIAC. Several items on this page, generally, a lot of different components relating to safety, park access, community gathering and maintenance and reinvestment in existing parks were sort of the hot topics there. Then from your joint session, if you recall, we had two different kind of polling questions in addition to our open discussion. Really looking geographically, I think there's very priorities throughout the city, different needs, different parts of town. But generally, there's an investment emphasis on reinvestment, connections to parks and then play and gathering. And those are in common with DEIAC priorities. The council and Planning Commission also had some emphasis on nature, in particular in the Western McMinnville area. A lot of overlapping project types as well between City Council, Planning Commission and DEIAC. So in particular, really like the first five on this list or so were very much overlapping. Restrooms are something we've heard about a lot, especially in community parks, just to enable people to be there longer and be there, you know, with kids and people of all ages, just an accessibility thing. Water-wise landscaping and shades are looking at our connection to nature, you know, being sustainable in the parks, safe routes to parks. So again, getting at the connections between neighborhoods and parks. And then facility repairs, so reinvesting in those elements. River access also came up as a priority for City Council and the Planning Commission as well. And then the community survey. So this, we got about fourteen hundred responses. We left it open for about six weeks. We really reached people who live in all parts of McMinnville, work in all parts of McMinnville, students. You know, mostly adults taking the survey, but a lot of them representing families and younger children. The survey was available in Spanish and we got several responses there. So we were happy with the kind of broad cross-section we got from this survey, just as a little background on who these responses are from. Generally, the priorities from the community survey, we kind of broke them up into different cost groupings. But, you know, in terms of what they had in common with DEIAC and Planning Commission and Council, really an interest in, you know, safety, lighting, trails and connectivity. The community also had that interest in the river access, in particular riverfront trail. Geographically, I think the groups agreed on priorities in central and northern McMinnville. I think that council had a bit more priority for nature access, like I mentioned before, in Western McMinnville in particular, whereas the public was more interested in connections and playing gathering. Similarly, in Eastern McMinnville, the community was prioritizing connections to the rest of the city and to parks from that area. So that's what we heard about priorities from those three groups. The future system summary is something I also want to touch on. So there's a few pieces of the recommendations in this plan. You know, there's a lot of emphasis on reinvesting in existing parks and facilities. We also look at, as shown in this map, where are there potential locations where we should consider new parks and new trails? So this map shows existing parks and then half and quarter-mile walk areas in pink out from those parks. So you can kind of see in white existing parks of the city that aren't within, you know, a half-mile walk of a park. You can see in purple how schools are helping us fill some of those gaps. Of course, that comes with, you know, some caveats about access and what the facilities actually are at those school properties. We've also identified the urban growth boundary in Tan, and that's where you can see we're projecting the need for some new parks out in those areas as that new development gets built, comes online. So the dashed circles are areas for potential future parks and the dashed lines are those future trail connections. So we went through this with DEIAC in our last meeting, got some more feedback on, in particular, looking at an opportunity for an additional infill park, maybe the north central area of the city, as well as a couple more trail alignments that could really connect more citywide. So those are the new facilities. The twenty-year capital improvement projects also include over one hundred and thirty different projects. So those fall into these categories we're using to organize them on this page. But really, they're new facilities or reinvestment in facilities at existing parks primarily. So when you look at the twenty-year list, you can see a lot of detail about where and what is being proposed. But generally, connections, we've got twenty-seven projects at eighteen parks identified. Playing gathering, we have thirty-eight projects at twenty-two parks. Reinvestment, this is the biggest one, sixty-two projects identified at twenty-six different parks. And then natural area improvements, we've got five projects at five parks. So again, the twenty-year list has the full detail, and then the five-year list has the prioritized near-term selection. That five-year list, just to summarize a bit, it sounds like you have them in front of you, but those, about half of those are falling into the city's community parks. So really, those parks that are intended to serve the broader community rather than a particular neighborhood. The rest are split mostly between neighborhood parks and smaller parks, new parks and greenways, like I showed on my map a couple of slides ago, and natural areas, as well as five percent of them are within linear or trail parks. So that's where the geographic distribution based on park type. They total about thirteen point six million in our planning level cost estimates for that five-year list. That gives you a sense of scale there. And then generally, the types of projects, hopefully you sound familiar from what I was saying priorities were from those different groups, but lighting improvements, accessibility improvements, different trail connections, public restrooms, event and gathering spaces and different play areas. So with that, I will hand it back to John to talk about implementation.
Thanks, Ellie. So that last chapter, shortly after we prioritized the projects, it goes right into implementation. So now, what do we do with this short-term project list? So we've got a couple of key recommendations here, as well as some funding options. And I just wanted to quickly go through those. I think the first and probably most obvious is the need to continue building community support. That won't just start right off the bat. There's been a lot of engagement during this process. The city does a great job of communicating with its residents. So it's really just more of a concerted effort to keep that conversation going. Because ultimately, there's going to be the need for a voter-approved bond measure to take on a lot of these costly projects over the course of the next several years. So I think that's the first and foremost is continuing to keep that conversation going and really showcasing this plan and the improvements and needs and vision that come out of this with the community. The second is leveraging partnerships. I think Ellie and I were both pretty blown away by just how many amazing partners exist in McMinnville from, you know, economic and downtown interests to schools, to higher education, to unitos, the county, I mean, the list goes on and on. And so the city really is at an interesting vantage point to leverage those networks, to expand opportunities, both in terms of facilities, investments, maintenance and programming as well. So it really does take this cast of characters to make this really incredible vision come to life. The third is advancing equity to monitor and update the plan. And I think this is one of the main things that we heard at the DEI Committee meeting last week, that just because this plan is developed and it eventually accepted and adopted, it doesn't end there. In fact, that's when it really starts. And so there was a concerted effort and idea to really keep that plan alive. This plan needs to be updated routinely. That's very important. And to do that with an equity lens is critical. You know, how are projects being prioritized? What are some things that are getting funded? Are those really in the same sets of neighborhoods and areas of need that this plan identifies? And then finally, pursuing a variety of funding sources. You know, a bond measure is a potential big one. We're also updating the city's park SDCs, the system development charges. We've met with you all separately to discuss that. That'll be part of the park system plan update. Will include those new SDC rates for parks. So there's a number of different number of different funding sources. There's no one-size-fits-all and there's no obvious solution for any one project. It'll take a combination of things. So I think at this point, I covered a lot of ground. Hopefully, this was a little bit of new material with some review of things you've seen before. But I think what we'd like to do, I'm guessing there are a lot of questions and comments out there. I think what we'd like to do next is walk through a couple, let's see, three questions, three main questions. If you do have, you know, minor comments or little fixes or changes, definitely want to hear about those as well. I think getting those to Susan would be great. We'll make sure we get those. But I think with the little amount of time we have tonight, we'd love to hear your responses to some of these bigger questions you have. And of course, any questions really, since we're here together. So first question we have, I'm sorry, we have an extra slide in here. You can go back one, Ellie. So I just, before we did get to those questions, I'm reminded of this. We did want to just quickly touch on what we did here from the DEI Committee last month. We covered the same presentation we're talking about tonight. Had a lot of good questions, really good in-depth discussion about some ideas and potential changes for the draft plan. So I just wanted to highlight some just quickly. One came up was accessible routes to parks. So, you know, the draft plan shows some new trail connections and greenways, but there were some ideas about what we really need to highlight the emphasis on safety and just getting to parks. You might have heard of safe routes to schools. There's a sub-movement to that called Safe Routes to Parks. So that's something we want to think about. Added opportunities in underserved areas, so places in McMinnville that don't have a ten-minute walk to get to a park or recreation activity. Ellie touched on the fact that we have that in the short-term project list, but potentially adding more to that. I mentioned involving the community in future planning, so keeping that that community involvement going with future projects. And then as part of that, an idea came up to have a metric to track progress of the plan and to measure how well the plan is doing over the long term. So monitoring the plan, we've got a question tonight. We wanted to ask you related to that one. And then again, just a reminder, this is a living document. It's not meant to just sit there and then get updated 20 years from now. Ideally, it's something that the city is looking at at least on a, you know, two- to five-year basis and making changes over time, because things don't stay the same. We all know that. Okay, so I think now we're on to the questions. So the first question we have, just a general question, you know, kind of what do you think of the draft plan overall? More specifically, do you think recommendations, which are new to council tonight, do you think they support the key needs we've presented in the past that we've heard from the community? And if not, what are some changes that you'd like to see?
All right. Thank you. We'll just go from one end of the dais to the other. So we'll start with you this evening, Councilor Channawith, if you're ready. I can. Counselor Gary.
Thank you for the presentation. I have nothing related to this. I was able to be a part of the DEIAC's conversation and so I think, yes, I think the plan's recommendations support the key needs we heard from the community.
Thank you. Counselor Mankey.
Am I not? There you go. Okay. I believe the plan does support what the community has said. I I know how important parks are when I was raising children and then when raising grandchildren. It's a very important feature in our city. So I'm enthused to see plans for larger parks and some significant changes for the better with your lists of projects here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Payne.
Thank you. I have a clarifying question first. So the table five-six that Susan so kindly gave us to reconcile the plan references replace play structure and replace play area. And I just wonder if those are the same thing or two different things?
And you're talking about it, two different parks?
Yeah, so where I caught it was under Parklets. So Bendo River says replace play structure, and then in Kingwood, it says replace play area. But that play structure also needs to be replaced at Kingwood. So I just...
Yeah, we think of that as the same thing. In the structure, I think the inventory component of it might have categorized them a little differently, depending on what was included. But basically, I would think of it like as a makeover for the play areas. But basically, I would think of it like as a makeover for the play areas. And then some of the feedback that we got from the DEIAC was really making sure that accessibility piece for all of the playgrounds throughout the plan really comes to the forefront when we're designing them.
Thank you. So I did have, I do agree with the rest of the council thus far that it does support the key needs of the community and what we've heard. I have some questions related to the plan, so you can tell me, John, or Ellie, or Susan, where those fit in, if you want me to wait on those.
Sure. Do you want to try to get through directly answering their three questions? And then we did book additional time, and so, and I think there's, my guess is, you're not alone that you have additional questions and comments. So let's go through their three questions, and then we'll come back and do more of an open call for questions if they haven't been addressed throughout that conversation.
Great.
Okay. Councilor Peralta.
Thank you, Mayor. The main question I have is, maybe this is coming up in the presentation, but the funding mechanisms, SDCs, the bond, those are two things the city can control. Donations and grants, maybe a little less so. Did you have a sense, or do you have a sense already of, you know, based on the conversations we have had, how much of each of these projects, or how much of the total is going to come out of SDCs versus potential bond versus needing to go and seek grants and donations? Assuming the conversations kind of align the way that we have had to this point.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a great question. I can address that one. In the draft plan, I think it's the next table, Table 5-7, that has an overall summary of those bigger funding sources, or the, you know, the common funding sources. And then it applies the short-term project list to what we recommend for each of those funding sources. And the way we did that was, we looked back at the last, I think it was the last five years, and looked at an average amount that the city typically brings in with, like you're mentioning, things that the city can't control, such as donations, grants. So we did an assumption on the average annual for those kind of other funding sources. And then from that, we also added an assumption on SDCs. Of course, we don't know what the updated methodology is yet, but we did have an increase, you know, an assumption for what that increase would be for the plan document. And so that's what the table is showing there. It's, I think it's 4.4 million assumption for that five-year project list. And then essentially, everything that wouldn't be covered would have to be a bond, and that's the largest item. That's the 8.7 million. And again, that's just something recommended for that short-term project list, because we went through the prioritization to figure out what are the projects that the community really wants to see take place first.
Thank you. Just one follow-up, if I may. The, I just wanted to confirm that this sheet that you handed us, Director Muir, is the same one that is on Pages 10 and 11 that says the first five years?
That, what I handed to you, Table 5.6, is actually Page 98 and 99, but I do think my...
I don't think your microphone is on.
Thank you. Oh, it is. It's just me. Not speaking close enough. So the Table 5.6 is Pages 98 and 99 in the plan, but I do think we put it in there twice, maybe earlier on, or summarized it. Your question was, is it on page? Which page are you on, Councilor Peralta?
I was at the very beginning of the plan, like 10 or something, on the plan. I'm not sure what page that is in the packet. I believe that it's the same capital projects chart. But, so even if it's not, my question is, do you envision these going in the first five years?
There are a lot of projects, right? So this is why the Parks Plan is so important to have our partners at the table who help us manage construction projects. And Jeff and David and I have been talking about that. It's ambitious. This is a really ambitious list for the level of staffing and resources we have right now. I think we're all a little nervous about it, given the lack of resources that we have currently in Parks Maintenance. However, that is what the plan calls for, and if the funding plan is implemented the way we have proposed it in here, our goal will be to get the resources in place to meet those objectives.
Thank you, Director Muir.
Thank you. Councilor Chenoweth?
I actually don't have any questions. I appreciate all that has been brought to us at this point.
Thank you. And Council President?
Nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So should we move to the second question? And I would just, I guess I hear the consensus, and I would reiterate that I think the plan's recommendations support the key needs that were heard so far from the community.
Excellent. Thank you. Second question we have for you all is something that comes out of what we discussed with the DEI Committee, which is, are there outcomes, once this plan is adopted and implemented, of course, for this project to adapt or change potential unwanted consequences? So this is something that comes out of what the DEI Committee has been discussing in terms of any changes, any improvements, any new projects, you know, a new park, new play area. Are there potential unwanted consequences that could come with that? And so that's something that we wanted to pose to council. So we'd be interested to hear if anybody has anything they'd like to mention.
Thank you. We'll go in the same order. Councilor Chenoweth?
I mean, obviously, we want to make sure that there is flexibility to be able to fix things as we discover them that weren't addressed properly the first time around. But beyond that, I don't have any ideas.
Thank you. Councilor Gary?
Yeah, I would, curious the consultants' experience in sort of parks and rec, open space, master plan, measurement tools and analysis. What are, I would tap into your expertise on what are other folks doing to manage the project long-term? What have you seen that works well? What have you seen that doesn't work well?
Yeah. Great, great question. I think some of the things that we've seen in other communities, other park systems that would relate to McMinnville, just thinking of a couple of examples. One would be flooding, you know, something that obviously impacts McMinnville. We're working in communities and have worked in communities that address that as well, in some cases as serious as relocating, you know, homes and businesses away from flood-prone areas. There's also impact to parks, of course. Joe Dancer Park, I think, is the obvious one that comes to mind. So really thinking about what are some improvements that could go to those parks that are, you know, kind of flood-proof, or things that work with flooding, like impervious, or pervious trails, excuse me, you know, kind of low-impact improvements to areas like that, versus having a, you know, a structure like a added restroom or those types of things that would really impact what happens when a flood hits. Wildfire is another big one. Climate change, you know, temperatures changing and summer's getting warmer and so on. So those are some things I think that we heard a little bit about that would relate to this question in McMinnville in particular. So things like shade, thinking about what we're planting, landscaping in parks and greenways to make sure we're, you know, managing wildfire risks the best we can.
Very good. I appreciate that list. That's good stuff to chew on. I guess the only other one I would think about on an answer for number two, as opposed to turning it around and asking you guys, is that, I know we've had it in the recommendation, and it sort of is question three in the, as it's written, but I think propping up that Parks Rec Advisory Board, you know, in conjunction with onboarding the plan and, you know, passage of the bond next year to build and construct a facility, and if we can inject capital into the plan to hit the ground running with the plan, to prop up a committee that's made up of people, you know, that were engaged in the process of creating this and passionate about that message of equitable park access. If we can be thoughtful in that composition and prop that committee up with this beautiful plan and an infusion of capital, I think that would be a great way to start managing and mitigating possible unwanted consequences.
Thank you. Councilor Menke.
What's happened in the past with equipment? I see we're going to be replacing probably a number of play areas and things like that. How do you plan for long-term use of equipment? Has there been significant improvements in the way, you know, like sports courts and things like that, that could hold up to a flood and things, you know? I'm just kind of curious about the equipment.
Happy to answer that one. I don't know. Can't see if everyone's looking at the screen, or maybe Susan. But yeah, I can maybe take a pass at that one. Typically, a lot of the, let's take place structures, for example. Typically, a lot of the kind of off-the-shelf place structures that you tend to see, average, usually have about a 20-year lifespan. And that's not to say that they could be just fine, you know, 25 years, but typically, you want to plan around having, you know, funding available to make those replacements happen. Are there better materials? You know, sure, those things are always evolving, but they get a lot of use, you know, they're out in the elements. And so things like that, they just have a lifespan. And so I think that's across the board, is just having some of those really well-used, you know, facilities, especially in popular parks, popular places. Those are some things that we addressed in this plan, is having that focus on making sure there's funding available to make those replacements over time, and also doing that in a way that is really strategic. You know, we can't go out and replace 15 playgrounds all at once. It has to happen in an orderly fashion. So that's kind of one example. I think, and then another is, and I think we talked about this with council together in a previous meeting, is just thinking about what types of materials and infrastructure really take a lot of resources, you know? So water use, energy use, those are all things that the park system of the future can incorporate in new, you know, new and improved site design to address kind of long-term sustainability.
What about using natural elements as part of the park recreational type of opportunities? Like rocks?
Absolutely.
Things like that? Okay. I appreciate what you're saying, and it sounds like whatever we're going to construct as a part of this will at least, will at least live through the plan and afterwards. So that's comforting to know.
And I might add too, Councilor Menke, the component of maintenance and capital replacement is something that is built into this plan. That's why it's going to be really important for us to make sure we keep moving all parts of it forward. So the renovation and replacement that we have built into this plan on Page 95, we have a cost assumption based on 85% of the full build. So we're trying to budget for those as well, and really create what would be a capital replacement budget and a capital replacement plan.
Yeah, it really sounds to me like we had this discussion of SDCs not that long ago. I can see where we want to probably seriously look at increasing the SDCs to probably close to the maximum, and then choosing to perhaps certain groups or whatever. All right, thank you very much. I appreciate all the information.
Thank you. Councilor Payne?
Thank you. I don't know about adapting or changing the project exactly, because this is outside of my scope, but I have questions about Kiwanis Park specifically, and maybe MIG's experience in working with the Department of State Lands, and how that partnership might be delayed or time-impacted with just that communication with registration and application, with a boat launch, or a dock, and then, that's a separate question. And then there is some important plants that are growing nearby called camice, and not impacting those plants because it is culturally important to our area.
Great point. And that's, I think that might be something we can, you know, refine in the next draft of the plan, is to clarify that very fact about camice, which we don't specify. I think your question around Kiwanis Park and the Department of State Lands, that's a good question. I can't think of a specific kind of one-to-one example, other than to say, I think oftentimes what our experience is, is once the city has an actual plan, even though this is the system-wide plan, it's not a, you know, a site-specific plan. With this plan and some of the recommendations for Kiwanis Park, for example, I think that will help a lot for DSL, for example, to understand what is it that the city is really envisioning for their park system and for Kiwanis Park. That typically really helps a lot, even though this is, again, a system-wide plan. So we've seen traction kind of take place, and I'm not as familiar with this particular example, but we've seen a lot of progress happen, you know, once there's a new updated plan that's in place.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And if I can also add to that, there is a work group already started with the Marine Board and Visit McMinnville and several Yamhill County cities and the county. As a matter of fact, there's a community meeting in Dayton right now about it, and we're all coming to the table to figure out how we can strategically have those types of river access points along the corridor and also work with the state. So it's been great to have them at the table. This plan, like John was saying, has bolstered that, for us to be able to say we want to reinvigorate our connection to the river and have a new connection and way for people to access the water. I think this gets back to the unwanted consequences of, you know, the location that we built it years ago was sort of at the direct point where it gets the most water impact. And so with the potential opportunity of the Miller property and maybe the rec center and a little bit better bend of the river, there's actually some really good improvements that we could make down there to connect it all. So the partners are at the table on that one, and we are happy to have more people talking about river access.
Thank you. Actually, if I could, I had a miss on the first discussion question, which is that the previous open space master plan had a idea for a trail from the Joe Dancer Park to Linfield, and I don't see that in this. So that's one question that I had that was a miss. And then the second miss that I had from the first round of questions was, we had talked about putting in some kind of calisthenics stations on a linear trail, and I don't see that either. So those are two questions that I had that relate back to the first. And then regarding the second, mitigating multiple possible unintended consequences. For me, the big thing is safety, and so I was really appreciative that each part of this plan included additional lighting in places where I felt like safety was an issue. So I thought that was really thoughtful, and I appreciated that. I would just ask if there's any other, I would just encourage us to think through whether there's any other locations that are currently underutilized and then potentially budgeting for lighting in some of those places where we aren't necessarily thinking about it. And the example that I would give would be the Kiwanis Park. I don't think that's lit anywhere except right at the parking lot. And we've, I've gone hiking there kind of later in the day, and at times, it does feel a little unsafe. So lighting is my mitigation. Thank you.
And thank you for catching the trail. The DEIAC actually caught that trail connection down through Linfield as well, and so that will be one of the changes that you'll see. I appreciate you pointing that out. I think the fitness, maybe, John, you could address the fitness station component.
Sure. Yeah, there are a couple of parks where we have that as a recommendation. I don't know if they're in the short-term, five-year project list, but in the 20-year, you know, which encapsulates all of the recommended projects, we do have that noted for... for both Thompson Park and Wortman Park to add fitness equipment. One thing that is another possibility is some of these larger play area, play structure renovations and replacements, that's also a really good opportunity to reconsider what's included in those spaces. Some of you might have seen some newer play structures sometimes have those features that are, you know, part of the kind of 8 to 80 age group that we talked about where you're able to exercise along with kids playing in the playground. So, that's something to consider once those projects start to get through more of the design stage.
Thank you. I do have one other question that just came to me. So, how old is the Dragon Park, the Dragon Park portion of that park?
1993.
93?
Yes.
I was going to answer by age.
So, thanks to my encyclopedic colleague here. So, that's 93. And then, maybe I should ask you. Discovery Meadows, when was that put in? The play structure?
2004.
Okay. So, from my perspective, Dragon Park has kind of held up better than Discovery Meadows. No, it has not? Okay. I'm not saying it's in currently better shape. What I meant is it feels like that play structure has sort of lasted longer. Does it just look like it's lasted longer? Here's the reason I'm asking is that I'm wondering if a lot of the newer materials that we use in parks, like the rubber mats, I don't know what it's called, but that rubber surfacing and the plastic bits that are on all the thing, I just kind of wonder how that holds up in our rain, in our rainy season. So, I see Dave is going to set me straight, so.
Just a little quick deal. The Dragon Park is a Leathers and Associates Community Build Park, and so, it's all wood material. Biggest issue under that, it's all creosote-covered.
Oh, okay.
Creosote and kids, not necessary.
Yeah, got it.
And then, you see, we see a tremendous amount of underground damage from the wood rots.
Got it.
In Oregon, wet soil. Discovery Meadows, beautiful structure, really cool. The problem was all the materials are designed for structures that were built in Arizona.
Right.
And so, we've had, so what you see there visually is a lot of failure in the wood elements. In Oregon, or actually probably over the country, any plastic element is going to fade. It just will. The ultraviolet light degrades the color. But of the two, I think, you know, if I was going to prioritize the two, I would put Dragon Park ahead because it has structural issues more than, you know, the Discovery Park, there's no structural issues, mostly aesthetics.
Thank you, Dave. My question wasn't as much about the timing of it as are there other materials we could consider that might be longer lasting than what? Because I was surprised that Discovery Meadows went down as quickly as it did, and I'm not familiar with what the life cycle of a park is, but.
There are, for sure. And those are things that we'll take a look at as each site's developed, you know, and Susan pointed out, some of these sites will use dachshund materials because there'll be nature-based play areas. Some will use sand and boulders and all that's good stuff. And then, with continued technology, we'll look at stronger materials, you know, particularly in structural posts and on the decks themselves, the platforms. And like everything else, it gets better with time.
Thank you.
And I will also say, as part of the construction and design project, at least for the most recent park, the Jay Pearson Park, we actually went into the Portland area, looked for the exact same play equipment, looked at how long it had lasted, looked at the coloring. That's why there's no red out there, because red is the first to fade. And so, we will try and find those types of examples and see how they're holding up. And then, just to emphasize what David said, I think having a variety of different types of play materials, play equipment, accessibility is really key, and that can also help kind of keep our parks looking a little bit more like they're supposed to look instead of all looking kind of rundown or older. But the other piece of that is the capital replacement planning that we're doing, you know, and Discovery Meadows is going to get a lift through the ARPA dollars, but just making sure that we're keeping that at the forefront will also really help.
To Councilor Peralta's point, on the flip side, I noticed that the Dragon Park, the City Park, the Upper City Park, the slide didn't, there was one slide in particular that didn't hold up because it was actually, the water was puddling at the bottom of the slide, and it actually got full of leaves, which probably made for some really entertaining opportunities when you guys were trying to dismantle it. But I just wonder if when you're choosing a park equipment vendor, if this plan considers a vendor's prices that are specific to our area that are going to meet the need we have with our climate, you know, because we might save money, so to speak, by choosing a vendor that's selling equipment that's designed for Arizona, but if we're choosing equipment that costs, you know, 25% more, that's going to last longer, does this plan include the budgeting for the proper equipment?
Yes, ma'am. The idea would be, as any new purchase, we're going to look at buying the best thing we can afford. And when you develop your specifications, and typically, we do that when we put new playgrounds in, we're very much in lockstep with the playground designers and the playground vendor. And one of the first things we focus on is what are the materials? And are they compatible with our environment? Because in Western Oregon, it's like, you know, putting flat roofs on buildings in Oregon, right? And you want to be a little careful with what you choose. So, we will be very thoughtful about that.
Thank you.
And I, this is John. I wanted to add too, in addition to that, I think what you'll see in the cost assumptions of the appendix, I think it's this appendix C, there's a table that shows, you know, basically what are our assumptions for a lot of these costs, you know, kind of per-unit costs. And one of those in particular is something that we at MIG know a lot about, which is play design, play area design and costs associated with that. So, those are all cost estimates that we've brought in from actual projects in the Pacific Northwest, so.
Thank you, John. And Director Mayor?
Hold on one second here because I have a line of councilors waiting on questions, and I haven't gotten around for everybody to do a first round of questions yet. So, if we can, before it becomes a free-for-all, if we can let Councilor Peralta finish with his questions, and then I will add you, Councilor Payne, to Councilor Menke, Councilor Geary, and you, and I want to get to Council President as well for some initial thoughts.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm done with my questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilor Menke.
Could you just briefly discuss the nature areas? I know that we're looking at one probably in the Fox Ridge Road area. How are those being thought of and how are the, kind of what's the idea behind them briefly as you can?
Yeah, sure. So, I think overall, these are a unique park type, and so, you'll see in the plan, you know, we have essentially developed parks and more undeveloped parks, and those have subtypes in those. But essentially, natural areas are really prioritized for conservation, natural area protection, habitat conservation, but also limited public access. And by that, the intent is, you know, things like trails, picnicking, interpretation, wildlife viewing, those types of things, rather than, let's say, you know, sports field, for example, which would not be compatible. So, you'll see in the list of projects for McMinnville's natural areas, the improvements are really for things like, you know, a footbridge replacement or, you know, for example, in Kiwanis Park, it's replacing the parking surface. So, really protecting those qualities and keeping those really healthy.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Geary.
Yeah, it's a specific follow-up to Councilor Payne's question about sort of the upfront calculus of, you know, making a decision on a low bid versus what do we weigh for benefits to the long-term maintenance cost offset? And just to see if there are policy decisions we need to put in to be able to now state that we would like to change the way we weigh that, so it's not necessarily a low bid, that we create a matrix for awarding those bids for park projects, to integrate decisions like that to say, okay, you know, at 10% more the investment, if, and I know that's sort of getting into crystal ball of like somebody selling you something upfront, I don't think you'll have to maintain this every 10 years, but I didn't count on the herd of goats program you were going to have. So, oops, you know, so are there that? And then, it gets at a little bit more of the, are there ways to change the way we award the bids for some parks-related projects outside of that? But just wanted to, that made me think about that. Is there something we can do in this plan to talk about that?
Yeah, it's a good question, and I think we might need to think about that and come back with that. There are a lot of conversations internally, talking about our procurement process and overall values and how we integrate them. I think that there might even be something as part of the DEIAC assessment to kind of factor some of those other value-based judgments into our procurement process. But I think at this point, nothing, and I wouldn't say there's much in the plan that needs to be revised. I think, you know, it's always a multi-departmental effort to craft one of those bids to put out and thinking about what's the best way and the smartest way and learning from mistakes and contacting landscape architects that are, have done recent ones, learning lessons from others. That's the way we'll move through that. But in terms of the larger procurement process, I think, you know, David and Jennifer Quayar probably would be having conversations about that and involved in how we bring that forward and whether or not we can do something not low bid.
Thank you. Councilor Payne?
My questions are general project questions, so I will wait until we're through.
Okay. Thank you. Council President?
Councilor Peralta asked a couple of questions I had regarding the linear trails in the Kiwanis Park, so thanks for that, so.
All right. Thank you. I have some questions for you in response to your questions here, but I do want to just underline a few things that I heard so far this evening, kind of follow up on Councilor Geary and Councilor Payne of how we implement that measure what you treasure in terms of how we're dispersing our finances, I think is very wise. I also, you know, second, third, fourth, sixth, seventh here, planning for climate resiliency in our future, which means fire mitigation, lower water needs, and may or may not have an emphasis on native species, of course, as we see these shifts. A little shout-out on your camas call-out, Councilor Payne. Usually, Councilor Peralta's the only one that talks about camas up here, so that was great. And then, I had also highlighted the Parks and Rec Advisory Board recommendation. I'd be interested in starting looking at how, what do we mean when we're talking about how we're going to form that, right? We don't want to predetermine who's going to be on the advisory board, so I think that that's an interesting future work. So, my questions for you, for our consultant team here are, one, you had mentioned the high level of respondents we got on the survey. You'd mentioned the survey was also available in Spanish, and then you said that we got some responses in Spanish. What was the percentage response that we got in Spanish? And then, an addendum to that question is, were you collecting any demographic data as well so that, you know, perhaps somebody who's Hispanic but chose to take the survey in English, but so it's something where we could have a comparative kind of look at whether our survey respondents were reflective of our larger community?
Yeah, Mayor, Ellie, I can respond to the first survey. I have this pulled up here. So, good question in terms of kind of who took that first survey. So, specifically, and this was, again, first survey, this was back in winter of 2022. We had 20, over 2,300 respondents. And then, specific to your question, let's see, so I guess I'll bounce around. One, yes, all of our outreach opportunities, surveys in particular, we do ask demographic questions, and of course, that is something that's very important to us to understand if we're really hearing from a, you know, representative cross-section of the community. And so, in this first survey, we, from respondents that completed the survey for the Spanish-speaking Hispanic population, we had 10.6% of respondents identified as Hispanic, Latino, Chicano. And then, we also asked, what language do you speak in your household? And 8% responded as they speak a language other than English at home. And then, Ellie, do you remember specifically how many completed the survey in Spanish?
Yeah, so it looks like the first survey, we had 31 respondents in Spanish. Second survey, we had 60 who took it in Spanish, and that percentage of folks who identify as Hispanic, Latino, Chicano went up to 10%. So, a little bit of an increase between the two.
Little increase. I heard 10% for both. Did I miss here?
Yes, it was 10.6% for the first survey.
Oh, I apologize. Yeah, so around 10% for both.
10%, okay. So, lower than the demographic makeup of the city as a whole. And then, do you map or do you map the where respondents are coming from? Are you able to map? So, can you, and could you map for us so we could see where respondent answers are coming from?
Sure, yeah. We ask a question in both surveys about where do you live and where do you work, and they're PIN-based questions. So, if you look at the appendix of the plan, there's a couple of maps, pages, let's see, 12 and 13, and then, the second survey has 56 and 57. So, you can see that the pins on those pages are quite well-distributed across the city for both where people live and work.
Okay, great. Thank you.
If I could, Mayor, also just add, this was a really, really important thing for the Parks and Recreation staff as we ventured into communicating with the community and No Alamaia too, and we had a special consultant working, a subconsultant working under MIG to help us with this. The questions that we asked related to demographics are something we intend to measure going forward as well. We asked age-related questions, gender identity, age of household. We asked language speaking and ethnicity. We asked education level and really trying to track that. My hope would be that we track that through all city surveys, but that was a really important part. And then, related to the geographic distribution, we literally kept in touch with MIG weekly on that, and when we noticed holes in our community where people weren't responding, we went door-to-door with flyers for that. So, that was like, it was a while ago. I know it feels like it was more than a year ago, but that was one of the really important values that we brought to this.
That's wonderful. Thank you so much. And I noticed the call-out from DIAC on, you know, community involvement and future planning, and so, that geographic distribution of our resources and not making people come to us, I think that's all fantastic. So, in your question, mitigate possible unwanted consequences, so, you know, one of the potential unwanted consequences, right? We talked about consequences for camas, et cetera, but when we start talking about people, of course, it would be that we continue to under-invest in already underserved areas. And so, I was thinking about this in terms of how we've talked about where our new parks should be placed and that that's largely been informed by community response, planning commission response, council response, which gives us all kind of a unique perspective. And so, but what we didn't talk about was kind of digging into the demographic data of what we know of each of these areas, which of course, is something that we've been doing really recently. And so, when I look at the map here, this map that you gave us this printout of, you know, we can see, it's very easy to see, there's the highlighted area you've called out as a potential opportunity, but there's, and then, there's another much more dense neighborhood area that also doesn't show a quarter or half mile to a park or a green space that we've provided, not counting school ball fields, which are, you know, private property and not, they're just not, they're not parks, right? And they're school ball fields. So, when I'm thinking about that kind of like data dive on how we're making that decision-making or what I'm thinking about is how do we do a data dive that helps us inform that decision so that it's not just based on, you know, who was able to be in the room at the time? And so, you know, I feel like there's a lot of opportunity. This is answering your question of mitigating possible unwanted consequence. I think that there is a lot of opportunity to start doing a greater data dive. I can tell you on where you have this central city infill opportunity. I can tell you on, where you have this central city infill opportunity on this map, so this is an area where I've been doing a data dive over the last many weeks because of another related project. And so I can tell you about this underserved area, you can see on the map that this, you know, this down, this, this kind of dense neighborhood area bordered by the high school and downtown, et cetera, that has no park within a quarter, half mile. This is what else I can tell you about this right now. People live one and a half times more densely in this neighborhood than they do in the rest of the city. There are lower levels of educational attainment in this area of this, in this neighborhood versus the rest of the city. Actually, it has a 17% lower high, uh, lower high school graduation rate. So, we're talking about significantly lower levels of educational attainment. This area is lower income, in fact, over 50% of the population earns a household income under $50,000. The median family income for this area is 29% lower than the rest of the city. They're also a smaller percentage of high-income earners. So, this area where there's no park is kind of continuously underserved, underserved. This is also an area where you, we have much higher rates of rental than homeownership, and it's also an area that lacks multifamily housing. And then just generally, there are more people living per household in this area. We also showed poorer health than the rest of the city. In fact, not, not only, not just general poor health, but poorer access to health, less access to transportation, higher rates of disease, more likely to live, to have exposure to particulate matter, diesel particulate matter, toxic releases into the air, lead paint, and proximity to hazardous waste facility. And then the, and then there is also a significantly greater concentration of Latinx and BIPOC community in this census block than the rest of the city. And so, data dives like that, when we're talking about, are we getting community engagement and feedback, really start to inform what we mean and, when we say "community," right? So, we're talking about having an all-encompassing, an all-encompassing plan that's really considered all of these unique perspectives. And so I would answer your question by saying, yes, there are opportunities for this plan to adapt and change and mitigate, and especially as we keep doing that work with DEIAC, but as we look to make these future investments, I think it's going to be really important that we are committing ourselves to pulling data, so that we're not putting forward a plan that continues to leave out the most underserved areas of our city, and that we can make those investments very conscientiously, which will ultimately increase the health of the city overall and of our community overall.
I think that's a great point about data being one of the components that we need to consistently strive for when we update this. And we also, the DEIAC is on this as well, they ask for particular measures, they want to help us craft them going forward with this, so we intend to utilize them in some way. So, thank you, that just adds extra clarity and also additional data points for us to think about as we go forward, updating the plan and regularly checking in on it.
Great, thank you. And then you have one more question?
One, one more question, and I think a lot of you have already been addressing this one, so I just wanted to make sure we ask it very clearly in case there's anything we missed. But just a very, very simple question, what, what do you think would be needed to implement the long-term vision? And the vision is, it's extensive and all-encompassing, but we talked about some things already, but yeah, the question is, as, as counsel, what do you think is going to be needed to, to make this a reality?
All right, great. And then we'll start with you, Counselor Payne, so you can answer this question, but also get your other questions out there, so we can be sure to get them answered as well.
Thank you. My first question is about the lower city park and the need to replace the covered area now. I'm just curious, because what's there is not that old, I'm just curious if it needs to be replaced because it's flooded.
There's two structures there, the one that has been replaced was the one that burned down, and there's another existing larger picnic shelter there, and that's the one I think you're seeing on the list.
Got it. And then I'm curious if there's been any conversation about installing any type of additional security, like cameras without audio, in higher trafficked parks like Wartman, maybe not Discovery Meadows, but definitely Upper City Park around the Aquatic Center.
And we already do have some cameras there, but definitely cameras are a part of that priority for clean and safe parks, definitely, it's part of that.
And then my last question is, I don't know if this just goes with like, park development, and it's just in there somewhere, but Corey Park has a lot of poison oak, so I didn't know if there was a plan to remediate that, so that it can be a safe and enjoyed park.
There, there is.
Get Counselor Gary's goats.
That, that could work. It's a very organic solution.
Say no more. No, we, we have a, you know, noxious weed program, and, and we'll go through that facility, we go through all of our facilities annually, and sometimes we get behind, and when we get behind, we just try to catch up.
Is there, I guess to that end, is there like a notice at the park entrances? Okay.
We, we, we have what's called Integrated Pest Management Program, and as part of that program, our staff will post notices, will place notices pre and post application.
Oh, no, I was going to say that you're about to enter the outdoors.
Oh, no.
Where wild things grow.
Oh, we don't.
So please be mindful of the fact that wild things grow here, and it could be dangerous.
We haven't gone that far yet.
We do occasionally post on social media when we notice a situation like that, and we also take that into account into our programming. Tice is another location that we try and be very careful.
Yeah, okay, that's all my questions, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Peralta. Thank you, Counselor Chenoweth.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Zach. In answer directly to the question, I think what we need for long-term implementation is going to be city buy-in, which will be demonstrated through bonding or whatever measures that we provide to them in order to, them to have a voice in what we're doing going forward.
Thank you, Counselor Gary.
To answer, my answer to number three would be funding, capital improvement plan, and funds for the capital improvement plan, and increased maintenance staff. And another sand feature next to a water feature.
Thank you, and Council President?
Similar to Counselor Chenoweth and, and Geary, definitely community engagement and funding, just off the numbers that were in the packet, it looks like there's about 4.7 in STC needs and about 8. something in general fund, bond, or donation needs, so, I think 8.9. So definitely trying to figure out the funding piece to that, and, you know, from the STC side and the, the bond and donation and general fund ask as well, so. And I think general fund-wise, you know, the sustainability of, of the care for this going forward, so that would be, you know, what I would, I would need before I could go out and ask the voters for something, is to make sure that we can fund the maintenance of it.
Absolutely. Counselor Manke, sorry.
I just wanted to reiterate how important our STC, STCs discussion was earlier, and that we need to think seriously about significantly increasing our STC levels. I also note that although we've got a ton of short-term projects, the only one that mentions a partnership is the Joe Dancer Park, and I really think that would be ripe for another discussion too. Thank you. Really great discussion.
Great, thank you. I don't have anything that hasn't been said to add. Any final thoughts, comments, or questions? Not hearing any. I, thank you so much for coming back, thank you for helping us to draft and create and engage and bring this plan forward to our community. We greatly appreciate you being here, and thank you, Director Muir, do you have any closing remarks?
Yes, just next steps, I want to mention that we are having a community open house at the Senior Center, two weeks from Thursday, from 4:30 to 6:30, we'll be there for anybody that wants to interact in person. We'll be going back to the DEIAC to clarify the changes that they asked through a motion. Once we close the public hearing part of the, or the public input part on the webpage, we'll come back to you with a final plan that will also include that STC conversation, so we'll be back.
Great, well, thank you so much. Thank you again for being here, we will close the work session at 6:57 PM. We'll take a three-minute break and start the regular council meeting at 7:00 PM.
Recording stopped.
Thanks, John, thanks, Ellie.